My name is Matt Largin. I'm the President and CEO of the Williamson County Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank each and every one of you for coming this morning to this important event. Welcome to the Williamson County Brentwood City Candidates Forum. I want to first thank the candidates for being here this morning, and more than that, thank you all for running. As a veteran of too many political campaigns, I know that doors don't knock on themselves, phones don't call themselves, so I just appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule, out of your lives, to run for these important positions. So, thank you, candidates, for doing that. I also want to thank the Williamson County Government for taping this today. This debate, this forum, will be rebroadcast on the county's cable system. It will be placed on our website as well with the candidates' answers, and also will be rebroadcast tomorrow morning on WK, WAKM 950 AM. I want to remind everybody in this room and the people watching that Election Day is May 7th, and I encourage you to get informed, learn about the issues, get a chance to meet the candidates, and go vote. It's the most important thing you can do, and you're really, it's your responsibility as a citizen, both the Brentwood end of this country, to do that. So, I won't take any more time. I'm just going to briefly introduce Tom, and we'll get this kicked off. So, our moderator for today's event is Tom Lawrence. Many of you recognize Tom's voice from WAKM 950 AM. And Tom, at this time, I'll turn the program over to you.
Good morning. I was delivered the questions about 7:30 this morning, and they're all fair questions. There will be one wildcard question from the moderator, and I'll save that for some time when you don't expect it.
Thank you.
We have five questions to pose to the candidates. Each candidate will have one minute to answer. After all candidates have answered, we'll ask questions submitted by today's attendees. If you have a question you would like to submit, please fill out the blank sheet of paper provided at your table and turn it into one of the volunteers collecting them around the room. They have their hands up right now. Our timekeeper is Devin McLendon with NAI Nashville. Each candidate will stop immediately after one minute. And Devin, what happens if they don't stop at the end of one minute? Minute and five seconds? Minute and 10 seconds? Okay. Thank you, sir. Today, we have five out of the six candidates running for City of Brentwood Commissioners. Jason Richardson was unable to attend today, but joining us today, from left to right, Mr. Jake Galbraith, Mr. Mark Gordon, Commissioner Ray Little, Commissioner Regina Smithson, and Mayor Paul Webb. The introductory question, there was a drawing when the candidates came in. The mayor drew first, and he drew the magic number right out of the box. All the others didn't have a chance, actually. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer this first question. What do you want Brentwood to look like in the next 10 years? And Mayor, you will have the first opportunity to answer.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you for the chamber for being here. Next 10 years, I expect that we'll see a lot of growth. Middle Tennessee, especially Brentwood and Williamson Counties, a forefront of the economy, the recovery of the economy, and we already see more homes being built. And so, as our community grows, we'll see what we saw a few years ago, when we had many new families coming into this wonderful area. So, that'll mean more schools, and of course, with the schools, become more volunteers, and sadly, more traffic, which we'll have to work on. But in 10 years, we'll see the continuation, and perhaps, we may be close to build-out in the city of Brentwood. What we're already seeing, and I think we'll see more and more of that, is the older neighborhoods will have what we call the redos. Sometimes, people buy the lots, and then they're going to redo that home, and we'll have more young families in there. So, I think the Brentwood that I came here in 1983 to raise my family will continue as we go over and over, as folks move out, empty nesters, so to speak, then the new families will move in. I doubt that anyone that lives in a neighborhood that's more than 20 years old has not already seen that. And I expect that to continue, and the reason is Williamson County, and especially Brentwood, is the place that you want to be to raise your family, and if you heard me say, to live, work, and play. We have such a great city here. We have a great county here. I don't think anyone can argue with that, and so, in 10 years, we're going to be at the forefront, and at the end of that 10 years, we will still be the premier residential community in the state of Tennessee.
Mr. Jake Galbraith.
Thank you. So, I think, part of all, thank you for hosting us, and thank you to the chamber for having this event, to let us share our views. Over the next 10 years, I expect great things from Brentwood. I expect to see more growth, as we've seen over the last 40 years. We're close to build-out, certainly of the commercial district, and I think over the next 10 years, we will see either build-out or future plans to build out the rest of the residential areas. You know, Brentwood hasn't changed over the last 40 years. It has adapted, but the core principles have stayed the same. The people want to come here, just as we've all come here, to come raise our families, to come start our businesses, and the business community thrives on the growing residential community, who has a lot of disposable income, and it's a desirable place to be. And so, I want to continue to make it a desirable place to be, and I think by keeping true to our values and making sure that we're all working together. It's a symbiotic relationship between the commercial side and the residential side, and we've got to make sure that both are equally strong.
Mr. Gorman.
Good morning. I'm Mark Gorman. Thank you very much to the chamber. Thank you very much, Mr. Lawrence, for being here and moderating another event. Thank you to Brentwood United Methodist Church, and thank you to many of the other members from Brentwood United Methodist Church that have supported my campaign. Brentwood, 10 years from now, what I envision Brentwood looking like 10 years from now, what I'd like to see Brentwood like 10 years from now, is close to fully built-out, and we will continue a very balanced growth plan out here. Over the past years, Brentwood has grown at a rate of 5% to 6%. That rate has been very manageable. We need to continue to foster that responsible growth and bring the business community, as well as the residents, together. That's important. That shared responsibility between those two parties is critical, to make sure that Brentwood can be the very best that it can be. We have very special conditions that exist here in Williamson County, that are not like other places in the country. We've all traveled, and that's why, across the country and seen several different places. The reason I call Brentwood home is because it's a choice. I choose to be here. But the socioeconomic conditions that exist here, the high per capita income, the high school rankings, the high quality of life, are very desirable and very rare. We have to continue to foster that. That will be very good for the business community. That will continue to drive property values in Brentwood and continue to have those socioeconomic conditions that will allow businesses to thrive because of that high disposable income. If you'd like more information about me and some of my thoughts on what Brentwood will look like in the future, please go to my website, votemarkorman.com. Thank you.
Mr. Little.
Thank you, chamber. Thank you, Tom Lawrence. Thank you all in the audience. Brentwood is a wonderful place. It's a beautiful gem. It has been for years. Brentwood has gone through several stages of growth, three in my lifetime, and especially with the schools and children moving in, and we're in another one of those phases. After we came through the recession, which was the deepest since the Great Depression, we were down to one year just having 16 building permits for houses. That has totally changed. I imagine we'll be around 300 building permits. But the interesting thing, as our neighborhoods are growing and we're getting children, so the Brentwood I would like to see 10 years from now would be financially strong, realizing we're a unique community with only 5% of our land being commercial, but it providing almost 60% of our revenue. That is wonderful. That's how we protect one acre density. Wise management of our commercial areas, that's how we protect one acre density. That's how we raise revenue for the schools, to keep them some of the foremost in the nation. I would like to see a Brentwood where areas of our town are pedestrian-friendly. I would like to see, talk about comprehensive traffic study on the north end. I think the whole city probably needs comprehensive traffic study, the south end, east, and west. I think we, as a community, I think in the past, have always been very positive, working towards challenges. I don't consider them problems, because a challenge is often an opportunity. It's an opportunity to do something better, and if the community comes together in a positive way, everybody really seeking for what's best for Brentwood, 10 years from now, Brentwood will continue to be one of the most desirable places in the world, as it is now. But you need a commission who is willing to come up to the challenge of looking at things and seeing if they are best for Brentwood, not being afraid of what the future holds.
Ms. Smithson.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the chamber, Mr. Lawrence, all of the audience, and all the people who have helped to set a forum like this up. It's a challenge to get everyone together and make sure everything's working right, so thank y'all for doing that. I would like to say that 10 years from now, I hope Brentwood continues to be the most desirable city in the state of Tennessee, and with the right leadership, I think we will. I've been able to be honored to be on this commission for 22 years, and I'd like to thank all of my opponents for all the nice things they've had to say about the things I've helped build. Just kidding. But it is. It's something to be proud of. When I got on the commission, it was an A-plus credit rating, and then we have a triple-A bond rating. We had $600,000 in our general reserve fund. Now, we have $30 million, and that 22 years, we have not raised property taxes. That's a record to be proud of. That's something that keeps businesses coming to this area, because we're financially sound. If we continue to be financially sound, businesses want to come, but there has to be a balance in business and residential. And Brentwood was built and started out as a residential community with the commercial on each end, and that's what I'd like to see it be 10 years from now, or 20 years from now, with it still being a core residential community, with enough business support, enough shops, enough theaters, if you want a nice dinner theater somewhere in Brentwood, to have the ability to be able to put something like that in, but keep it balanced with what the residents want. And I think that there is good leadership in place, as far as Brentwood's concerned, and would like to continue to be part of it. Thank you.
We did ask Jason Richardson to respond to this question, and he gave us a short response, and for this question only, we didn't want to read his response. "I have the wonderful benefit of working at home for a great company, and it provides me a great deal of flexibility, and allows me to live and work in such a great city. Despite that flexibility, I have projects that need my focused attention at work, and the demands prevent me from being able to escape long enough for the forum. I know that the Williamson County Chamber will present a quality forum for the city, and I want to thank them for the opportunity that they're providing for the community to get to know the candidates on an even deeper level. It makes me proud that this election cycle has had the coverage and community involvement that it has had up to this point. I hope that knowledge helps to draw people to the ballot. Again, I apologize for not being able to attend, and I do wish you the best." Question number two, and Jake Galbraith will answer first. "Please explain why you are for or against mixed-use development that includes a residential component." Jake Galbraith.
One minute.
One minute, please. All questions now will be restricted to one-minute responses.
I am absolutely for mixed-use development in the original town center area, whose purpose was to go in and redevelop and revitalize an old community, an old development that needed to be redone. It is nonconforming to our current standards. Now, in that development, what it was envisioned to be was a 20% residential component, which I think is sustainable and scalable, and at a scale that makes sense. Outside of that development, as you get into abutting the residential areas, I don't want to see that scale expanded, and so, I think inside the town center, I think it's completely appropriate.
Mr. Gorman.
I'm against mixed-use development that includes a residential component, and the reason I'm against it is because you cannot define what an apartment is, what a condo is, what a hotel is, come to find out in my research out there. Brentwood is a very special place. We have grown and become the city that we are, with a great business community, but more importantly, the one acre zoning out there. If we overrun our infrastructure, which includes traffic, schools, all of the public utilities, that's not good for anyone. Bringing in high-density hyperdevelopment will not serve Brentwood well. Thank you.
Mr. Little.
Mixed-use has many benefits, one of which, the sales tax revenue that it generates really, really helps our schools. Always remember, on all of our taxes, sales tax help the schools more than anything. As far as the residential component, that was put in before I came into office. When we did the overlay, it was set in also. As we looked at and talked about the tapestry, there was not a whole lot of issue with the greatest part of the population, as I talked with them. As we went through the streets project, I realized that that is a point that the citizens do want to comment on. I'm glad we're going to have a workshop on the 18th and be working towards what is good for all of Brentwood in a mixed-use setting, and especially the residential, since that seemed to be the biggest thing. But mixed-use provides the best taxes and the best mix of traffic abatement of any type of development we could do in the Brentwood city area.
Mrs. Smithson.
Tom, would you repeat the question, please?
"Please explain why you are for or against mixed-use development that includes a residential component."
Well, after we had the tapestry, that is 393 units, as far as I'm concerned, that's enough pedestrian traffic in the downtown area. When I started out on the C-4, I envisioned a village-type condominiums above little shops and things that would be more quaint, pedestrian-friendly, easy to get around in. And when the recession hit, I thought that maybe the tapestry would add an element to the downtown that we couldn't get from all the landowners that were down there coming together. But now that we have that, and a builder or a developer cannot guarantee us that they would not turn into rentals, they could be condominiums, but he couldn't guarantee that they would not be rented out, and that's my opposition to residential in the C-4.
Mr. Webb.
Thank you. Mixed-use, I think, is a good thing, and I think Brentwood will actually do better if we have some mixed-use. But the second part of that question is residential. I'm on record, I'm against that, have been from the get-go, because of what we ended up having down there on the south area of Church Street. That is the thing that I've said before, let's take that off. I still go back to the old C-4 area, that from Old Hickory to Church Street roughly, that says, you know, give some building owners an opportunity to have one or two units kind of above the shop, if you will, if we can get regulations that say that they're very restricted in what can be up there. We may not, but I think there are the opportunity out there to have some very limited residential in what I would call the old Brentwood along Puget Drive, Old Hickory, in that area. But south of Church Street, no. But we can have mixed-use development, because I see that coming in the synergy center, a good mixed-use office and retail area in the synergy center, and that'll be our example.
Question number three, and it will be addressed to Mr. Gorman first. "What would be your criteria for offering tax incentives for a company to locate or expand in Brentwood?"
So, the analysis that has to be done is something that I'm accustomed to doing. You have to go through and you have to do a pro forma. What does it potentially bring in terms of, you know, giving someone a tax abatement? Is it necessary? A lot of analysis has to be done, so you have to look at what type of jobs are being created? What's the impact to the area? What does this business bring in terms of the taxes to the city? What's the potential offset? Is there a risk of losing a business? Is there a risk of not getting a business if you don't offer the tax abatement? All of those things have to be brought into the discussion, and it's an analysis that I've done for 20-plus years throughout my business career. Thank you.
Mr. Little.
I feel that tax abatement or tax incentive should be very rarely done, and I don't see many situations in Brentwood where it will be done at this point. You do have to look at who the business is, how many people they employ. As they move into this space, are they opening up more space for other good corporate people to come to Brentwood? Office parks provide revenue for us, and in the situation, I think, the Tractor Supply, that will help anchor a office park that's about 30 years old. It also will spur growth and remodeling and refurbishing of some of the older buildings as time goes on. It also will provide an area where we will have more office space. The dollars were definitely there for that proposal.
Mrs. Smithson.
I probably have a different take than these gentlemen. We had never offered a tax abatement. I've been on the board 22 years, and we have a lot of good businesses in Brentwood. I think when you start that, you open Pandora's box. You have a tendency to say who you're going to be fairer to than another business. I think that it's important for us to understand, we have a very, very friendly business environment in Brentwood. I never did feel like Tractor Supply was a threat to leaving, that we already had the land prepared and everything else. I couldn't imagine them taking it somewhere else to get that tax abatement, just because of the tax abatement. So, I really have a problem with that. I think that if every business knows what they're expected to do, and the city follows through and is fair, then we have a better business environment in Brentwood.
Mr. Webb.
Thank you. In our case, we've only done one, and that's the way it ought to be. It ought to be rare, and it ought to be thoroughly analyzed. What are the options out there? As you know, Metro Nashville is fighting for everything they can get. They were throwing millions at somebody even just to move across the street. We also know Rutherford County has a big park that they want to fill up, and the shareholders of these companies expect something, and so, the plans are going to come before us constantly. This is not something that's going to go away. So, the county's going to take the leadership. They never give away the school tax. In our case, we've got to look, if we put a dollar out there, what is our return? And I'm prepared to say no, if there's not a good return, and then I'm also prepared to say yes. So, we've got to analyze it. It won't be retail. The county's going to be the leader in this, and I think there are many times that when Metro fills it up, that we're going to see them leave, as we have already. I don't see that this is going to be something that's going to continue for Brentwood, because we do have a great city that people want to bring here, not only to live here, but to bring their businesses here.
Mr. Galbraith.
I think the thought process of the tax abatement or tax incentives are actually a good thing. They do need to be used sparingly, and you don't want to get into a situation where you're creating winners and losers, particularly on a political basis. But we do have to, to the extent that we want developers to work with us and want to retain businesses, there may be small, there may be limited situations that it does make sense, but it's going to be because of competition from around, as competition increases for these businesses to bring their jobs, to bring their dollars, and I think we just have to be very, very wise in determining those situations.
Question four. Mr. Little will answer first. "Understanding that the city's limited commercial development pays for a majority of the city's budget, actually up to 60%, describe the role the City of Brentwood should play with the Williamson County Chamber of Commerce. If you're an incumbent, please first detail your history in the topic, as well as outlining what your role will be if re-elected." Mr. Little.
I think the Chamber of Commerce is a wonderful organization. I thought it was a wonderful organization when it was the Brentwood-Cool Springs Chamber of Commerce. I think now that it's unified, that will be better for Brentwood and will be better for the county. I have some experience with this. I served on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce from 2000 to 2003. I was Board Member of the Year in 2003. Business is very important to Brentwood and to Williamson County. That is what keeps us strong. We lie just to the south of a very large metropolitan area, and though we do so much want to cooperate with them in many regional endeavors, we also want to stay strong and independent, and we do that by financial strength. And our businesses really help bring the tax revenue and really provide lots of services to our citizens, so I think, as a commissioner, I would be very supportive of the Williamson County Chamber of Commerce.
Mrs. Smithson.
I've always been supportive of the chamber and the role that they play in the community. Obviously, collecting 60% of our tax base from businesses are very important to us. My husband and I have a business right off of Cool Springs Boulevard. My kids all have businesses here, and we just feel like Brentwood is a thriving community with an active chamber. I try to participate some in the chamber. I'm not going to sit here and say I'm very, very active in it. I'm very active in my city role, but feel that without the chamber, we certainly would be in trouble. The chamber is a great promoter of business, and Brentwood has always walked hand in hand with the chamber to make sure that we're a partnership. Thank you.
Mr. Webb.
Well, the chamber with me has always been one of those things where we listen to them. They listen to me, and I've listened to them, either as their group or as individuals, and I think that's important. That's the open-door policy as a public official. The chamber represents an area of business, and they also put us in contact with individual business owners, so that we can see what their problems and issues are, so I hope that we continue that. The new Williamson Chamber, of course, is now our economic development for the county, and so, I hope that we'll work more closely with them, because anyone that wants to come to Williamson County and Brentwood is going to come through the chamber, Matt Largin and his team. And so, I think that we will be working more closely with those, as Matt and his team try to bring new businesses into Williamson County and especially Brentwood. It's a great teamwork to work together, and they understand our issues, and I try to understand the issues that they have coming forward.
Mr. Galbraith.
I think we need to have a great working relationship with the chamber, and I think we do, from the looks of this forum, the participation, and just the communication that I've seen over the last several months and years. The goal to working with the chamber is to promote business, to retain business, and to promote future businesses to both come here and stay here. I think we need to work on a global basis. Our success depends largely in part on the retail community in our south in Cool Springs. That's very much a part of our Brentwood community, given that we've limited retail development just to the north. So, that's our retail on the south, which also helps our schools, and so, we have to see that as a partnership and not a competitor, but I think we can work together to continue to make Brentwood a place where businesses want to come and stay.
Mr. Gorman.
Would you repeat the question, please, Tom? Would you repeat the question, please, Tom?
Understanding that the city's limited commercial development pays for a majority of the city's budget, describe the role the city of Brentwood should play with the Williamson County Chamber of Commerce. If you're an incumbent, please first detail your history and the topic, as well as outlining what your role will be if re-elected.
Thank you. So, I've looked at the numbers, have met with the Director of Finance for the city, Carson Swinford, and appealed the numbers back a little bit more. Of the revenue that's generated from the city, approximately 12 million is from sales tax. That is, those are dollars that come from the residents and folks that visit Brentwood. Those dollars are collected by the businesses, not necessarily generated, since it's a tax. Of the balance out there in the general revenue, approximately 75% of those revenues come from the residential component, 25% from the commercial. So, what's important to do is understand those numbers in terms of how they actually come together. In terms of working with the chamber, I think it's important to be a conduit. The existing process in terms of how the business and residents work together is antagonistic at best. Someone needs to bring the two parties together. Thank you.
Fifth question. And Mr. Webb, have you, yes, you have answered, haven't you? So, Mr. Webb gets the first response. The Brentwood City Commission... Regina?
Yeah, you can skip me if you want to. Go ahead.
All right.
I wouldn't make a big deal out of it.
No, never a big deal. The Brentwood City Commission is an at-large board, charged with representing the best interests of the entire city. Please share specifics on how, if elected, you will, A, seek opinions from all residents, and B, how or if you plan to communicate with the citizenry during your term.
Start with me, right?
No.
Okay. Will you read that again, please?
Yes, ma'am. The Brentwood City Commission is an at-large board, charged with representing the best interests of the entire city. Please share specifics on how, if elected, you will seek opinions from all residents, and B, how or if you plan to communicate with the citizenry during your term.
Well, I like the fact that we're at-large because we don't just take care of our little district, the potholes in our side of town. So, we're able to go in all parts of town and be concerned about the entire city. I love that. The way I would and do communicate with citizens is I answer their emails, I answer their phone calls. Recently, I have asked that we put on our website a way that issues like rezonings, people can sign up to get notifications on rezoning through the website. I encouraged, especially with the streets of Brentwood, that all homeowners' associations be notified to get the word out on issues as big as the streets or anything else that would be of concerns to the citizens. And I try to be very responsive and will continue to do so. Thank you.
Mr. Webb.
Thank you. As I go about town, I listen to people, and if there's something controversial, I kind of ask them what they think. Some of the most recent things we've had, I carried a set of plans in back of my car and went into people's houses and carried it to restaurants. If they had, "I've got a question about this," I said, "Hold on, let me bring the plans in, let's talk about it." And that's the good thing. Small towns like Brentwood, we know people. We see them at the grocery store, we see them at the restaurant, we see them at church. And so, that's how I've seeked opinions from the community and will continue to do so. In the future, we're going to an electronic age, and we're already starting part of that. You know, we have the website, we'll continue to enhance our website, we're on Facebook, we're Twitter. Our police department and fire department put out notices, and we continue to try to work to communicate with all the citizens as best we can on the routine things, the emergency items that are coming up, traffic accidents. And then we also, as you heard, try and get the word out when there's something going on in the city that may be controversial, that people might let skip, fall under the radar. We will continue to do that.
Mr. Galbraith.
I think from hearing the voices of the people is just making yourself available. I mean, like, everybody got a postcard with my cellphone on it, and I'm completely available to, from email and cellphone, to talk anytime anybody wants to express their concerns. I think the bigger piece is informing the community and not making it necessarily their responsibility to come and check the website every other week to make sure there's not a big project coming through. And so, I think we need to be proactive and push information out to them on a regular basis so that everyone in Brentwood is informed, even about the small projects and the big projects, excuse me, to make sure that there are no surprises and that we are getting their input before we make some big decisions that affect all of us.
Mr. Gorman.
I'll continue to be very open and communicate with all stakeholders out there. That's important. If we can stay ahead of the communication side of the house, keep people informed, there are no surprises out there. That goes a long way. I've been on the Planning Commission for eight-plus years and have answered every single email, every telephone call that I've received. Additionally, I will have regular hours where I'll have open roundtable meetings, and we will talk about projects in the room that I see coming down the pipe. Get input from the residents of Brentwood as well, what they would like to see. Get input from the businesses in terms of what they would like to see. Professionally, I have been very fortunate, and I feel it's important to give back to my city. I currently work part-time for one of the HCA companies and have the time and willingness to serve the community and will give back. Thank you.
Mr. Little.
I think Brentwood being at-large, as far as their commission, is one of the things that has led us to be such a wonderful place to live. For two centuries, my family has served Brentwood in many ways, both in public ways and in business, through churches and organizations. I myself personally have done the same thing. On any issue, email, phone call, whatever, I always try to be responsive to the citizen. I also try to see what the citizen does want. If they are against something, what would they be for? That better helps us make decisions. Sometimes, because I have been here for so many years and grew up here, I will actually call people if I'm not getting information and ask their opinion and advice. I also operate a business where I tangibly, in a hands-on way, see many Brentwood citizens every day, and that is a wonderful resource for getting their input on issues facing the city.
We're out of the chamber-generated questions, and now we're into questions from the audience or the moderator. The next question goes to Mr. Webb, and please answer in three words or less. What's the price of milk in Brentwood today?
What size?
One gallon.
Okay. Purity $4.99 a gallon.
Mr. Galbraith.
Always buy, sorry, always buy Kroger, so it's about $3.79.
Mr. Gorman.
I haven't bought milk in the last week, but it's $3.79, last I recall.
Mr. Little.
I tend to go to Publix, so that's usually around $3.99, last I remember.
Mrs. Smithson.
All of the above.
Since that was kind of a trick question, Mr. Webb will start the serious question with you.
I thought that was serious.
And I'll read it as it was presented. What is wrong with renting? My business rents space. I have three relocating execs that have to commute from Nashville to work here. Each pays over $4,000 a month for their temporary housing. Mr. Webb.
I don't think there's anything wrong with renting in our residential area. I mean, if you're renting a house here in Brentwood, regardless of what subdivision you're in, there's not a problem with that. Many people have rented their houses for years and will continue to do so because that's their preference or that's their circumstances. I think the issue about the renting is in the high-density multi-residential, that there's a concern that the folks will not buy into the community and not have the pride that a homeowner has. But, there are many renters in many of these subdivisions, and they do take the pride in their city and in the subdivision and vote. So, as long as we're in the one-acre density in the residential subdivisions, wherever we are, don't have a problem with rental. I think that question is coming back more about are you for or against the high-density multifamily, and I think I vote against that. So, nothing wrong with rentals. We're glad they're here and hope they continue to rent those houses that people can't live in, for whatever the reason.
Mr. Galbraith.
I think renting, I guess, infers a short-term relationship. Most people who are renting, even our business community, who are leasing their long-term leases, and they've got a commitment. Ownership and long-term commitments bring stability, and we need stability for our schools so that people don't get rezoned all over the place when populations shift. But, we don't need a high number of people who are not entrenched and invested in the community, who, we don't need a transit community. We need a community that's invested and is here for the long term.
Mr. Gorman.
What's wrong with renting? Nothing. There are homes that are owned by private citizens that are for rent, and people rent those all the time. There's nothing wrong with that. What's wrong with apartments? A lot, from the perspective that they don't fit the one-acre zoning in Brentwood. They threaten to overrun our infrastructure, our schools, and create more traffic problems that are detrimental to all residents as well as business. Thank you.
Mr. Little.
Leasing is an American right. It's a property right that many of our ancestors paid a dear price for, among many other rights. To say that someone is necessarily transient because they lease is wrong. I am all for homeownership, and I've owned a home since I was 25-years-old, but there are situations where people have to lease. All through our neighborhoods, we have people who lease houses, who are wonderful neighbors and who are there for a long time. Now, I think the tapestry is kind of the elephant in the room on this. That was a unique situation, a unique property. The one advantage of those being leased is there's things they do there that they can't do if someone leases in your neighborhood next door. They do background checks. They do monitor the occupancy of the house or the unit. So, there's many advantages of them doing that. Would I have preferred them to be for sale? Definitely. But, leasing in and of itself is not a bad thing. It is just part of property rights for people to be able to lease their homes.
Mrs. Smithson.
There is nothing wrong with leasing or renting. I think that when you are talking about leasing or renting, like at the tapestry, I think you have a different situation. When that first came to us two-years ago, it was going to be condominiums that were sold, and in the whole process, it turned around, the economy and everything. I'm not happy with the fact that those are being rented. I'd much rather be owner-occupied. We live in landmarks, and we had to rent our house for three-years on a down economy where we were stuck with two houses. We had some of the best renters in the world. We had no problems with them. So, that is an American right to be able to rent, lease, buy, whatever you want to do, but I think the multifamily is the problem that we have in Brentwood. No more.
Next question from the audience, and Mr. Galbraith will answer first. Our residential can turn over to young families, but the aging office buildings in Maryland Farms have fallen to Class B and cannot sustain competition from new Class A space south of the city. What would you do to ensure the revitalization of Maryland Farms? Mr. Galbraith.
Well, I think we can certainly work with the business community to make sure that we are keeping that space as Class A, and we're going to have to provide some of the incentives and things. We can work with them on what to do about that. You know, it is an aging development, which might, I mean, we can't keep it Class A. I don't know if all the buildings in there, if the developers and the owners are going to put the money in to keep it up, and so we need to continue to encourage them to do so.
Mr. Gorman.
Yes, you're correct. Residential does turn over, and there is a lot of revitalization that goes on in the city. As far as Maryland Farms, some of those buildings are aging. One of the things that we've seen in my eight-plus years on the Planning Commission are different businesses come in and revitalize the properties. Most recently, as an example, just off the top of my head, Tennessee Hospital Association, very prestigious businesses relocating to Maryland Farms and is revitalizing that building. So, what can we do? We can encourage those businesses to come and have a strong community that makes it desirable from a relocation perspective that encourages that redevelopment. Thank you.
Mr. Little.
The residential does turn over, and that's one of the things that's driving our schools, but that's a blessing. Children are a gift, and our schools are vitally important. And I've seen it already two or three times in my life, and that will keep our community vibrant. As far as the commercial, that was a very important fact on Tractor Supply. That was very important to the decision I had on what we did with the small, very small tax abatement. New offices being built there will help. Looking at the Streets of Brentwood project, it did not come to fruition because the developer withdrew, but we have to look at our commercial areas and keep them vibrant. This attracts investors to come in. It shows the city's commitment. It shows our courage to at least look at things, even if we decide they're not best for Brentwood. So, that is what will keep our commercial office vital.
Mrs. Smithson.
Well, I think, like I said before, we have a very business-friendly environment, and it really is up to the owners and the businesses to redevelop the Maryland Farms, the building, but the city can work hand-in-hand to help them and to encourage them by keeping the infrastructure really in place, by using our tax money wisely for them to want to come be part of a vibrant city. And when Murray, Ohio, that piece of land and Baptist Children's Home, I mean Baptist Convention Center, piece of property is developed into hopefully shops and offices, that would give a great incentive for it to have a domino effect and start helping to revitalize Maryland Farms.
Mr. Webb.
Well, Brentwood in itself is a great product to sell, and so it's easy to do. The most recent example is the Boyle folks came in, and they're out of Memphis, and they bought the Synergy Office Park, and they're going to redevelop that office park. And they've worked hand-in-hand with us and the city staff to see what they can do because it's in everyone's best interest that an aging office park like that gets redeveloped. Now, that's one entity, Boyle, and then one park. Same thing will happen in Maryland Farms. People want to be here. Decision-makers look at Brentwood. This is a place they want to live, and they want to work close by where they live, and they want to bring their families here. So, everything we've got here, the schools, the infrastructure, the quality of the workforce, it's here, and that will end up being the revitalization of Maryland Farms. I look forward to working with Matt Largent and Mayor Anderson as they go out and recruit new business to come in, and maybe some of these buildings in Maryland Farms that are underutilized and will get revitalized. Maybe somebody will find a bargain, and they'll have a new corporate headquarters in Maryland Farms.
Eighth and final question. Mr. Gorman will answer it first. Would you support the city purchasing the remaining 80 acres at Smith Park?
The remaining 80 acres at Smith Park is something that needs to be studied very closely. Before investing city dollars, I think we need to exhaust all other options out there through private donation as well as potential land trust dollars. Thank you.
Mr. Little.
As with every decision that I've made while on the commission, I think it needs to be looked at with prudence. I think that back 80 acres, if you haven't walked it, is a wonderful addition if it is affordable. affordable. But we have a private citizens group, Citizens for Brentwood Greenspace, already raising money, and all of you obviously love Brentwood by your presence here. If you've not given to that fund, give. The city will have to see, when the time comes, what it can afford and how prudent it is. And citizens' involvement and how much money is raised will be a good indicator of the citizens' desire for that. As we said earlier, we represent all of Brentwood, and if all of Brentwood comes together and gives towards the purchase of that park, I think it's incumbent on the commission to strive to balance state funds and any other way possible to try to get that as a gem for the city. Thank you.
Mrs. Smithson?
Well, like Commissioner Little said, the Citizens for Greenspace are doing a great job raising funds. To help purchase that is $3 million, and if I'm not mistaken, the purchase option is until the end of this year. And if we could get grant money, if we could get state or federal grant money to go along with what Citizens for Greenspace collect, and they're, like I said, they're collecting a good bit of money, we might be able to make up the difference. That 80 acres would be a fantastic addition to that park because it's probably the best 80 acres of the whole 400 acres, and it would provide more ball fields and also cause the Carriage Hills street to be dead-ended. And so, there would be final, and those neighbors would feel like it was final for their street, not have another subdivision, and of course, the houses that would not be built there would be a good thing.
Mr. Webb?
I hope we can purchase it, but time is coming up pretty quickly, and you've heard here pretty much what I think we ought to do. We've got to pursue funding from various private groups and various other governmental funds to help us purchase that. The Citizens for Brentwood Greenspace is doing a great job. They can't carry the water by themselves. They've got to have us help them, and I think the city's going to have to put money in there as well. We're also using our personal relationships. We bring that up, and we talk to our elected representatives, and I'm Tennessee State Parks Director, is a friend of ours. I've told him upfront that if anything comes up to help us add park space to our city, please help us, and he's aware of that, and he's contacting me when that comes up. So, it's something that we are working on, we being your city commission and your staff, to try to get the funding for that 80 acres before the year-end ends. It is a prime piece of property. We hate for it to be developed when it could be a park and add to the Smith Park. So, you know, I encourage you to help if you've got any contacts or make a donation, and let's buy this 80 acres to complete Smith Park.
Mr. Galbraith?
I think the 80 acres needs to be a public-private partnership. I think the obligation for the public that we've laid out, I think, is legitimate, and I do appreciate the Citizens for Greenspace for stepping up, but we need to get that $3 million because the public piece is that we would have the commitment to develop that, the remaining 80 acres, and that's going to involve some substantial money as well to make that fruition into parkland and not just empty land. And so, I think the $15 million or so that we've obligated ourselves to put in includes the $3 million. I don't think at this point we're able to fund that by the city and not limit the ability to do other things that we need to do.
Where are you, Matt? We have one closing question. It's 9:04 a.m. Do you want more questions, or do you want to send folks home? Send them home. The closing question, this was chamber-generated, and Mr. Little will have the first opportunity. Please state how your leadership will contribute to the city of Brentwood over the next four years.
When I took office in 2009, the country was in the greatest recession since the Great Depression. City revenues were falling. In fact, they fell for many months. We had a thousand-year flood, but Brentwood showed its resiliency. We never lost our AAA bond rating, and the city is coming back strong. I feel if I can lead in crisis, then hopefully, we will have good times on the horizon and have for the last year or so. I think my service to the community over the years leads to that leadership. I think those who best lead, best serve. I think my knowledge of the city, both its past, its present, and vision for the future, make me a well-qualified leader for the next four years, and I feel that my love for the city and the city's citizens qualify me greatly to be your commissioner for the next four years. A vote for Ray Little is a vote for what's best for Brentwood.
Mrs. Smithson?
Well, I would certainly like to sit here and ask for your support. For the last 22 years, I've had the support of the people of Brentwood, and I think that my record has certainly been one that has brought our city, to help bring our city to the fine place that we live today. People stay here because of what we have, they move back because of what we have, or they move here because of what we have. I think it's probably the best-kept secret in Tennessee. I mean, we shouldn't be telling everybody about it because more moving in, but that's okay. We welcome them, and you know, just because we moved here, we can't shut the gate. We want it to build out in a desirable way, and I think that the history that I have, the leadership that I've shown, would continue over the next four years, especially with our new city manager and our brand-new assistant city manager. Thank you.
Mr. Webb?
Thank you. I think the most important part of the next four years is continue to listen. You heard me. I listen to you, and I'll tell you. We can agree to disagree when that comes up. Some people take that, some don't, but I'm willing to tell you when we disagree. I think the other thing that we've got to do, and what we have done for the last many, many years, is that we have and we maintain a well-qualified city staff. We don't want a lot of turnover. We don't want people that we want to pay to save a few dollars, so it's important from a leadership standpoint that we have strong, well-educated, well-informed, hard-working individuals in all of our leadership positions, and actually going all the way down to the people that do the chipper service or help you at the parks. I think the other thing that's important as we grow through in the 21st century is we maintain good relationships with those government officials, not only here in Williamson County, but also around the state, because something can happen in Nashville that would have a devastating effect on a city like Brentwood. So, I want to continue developing those relationships that I've already developed so that they can, those people outside of Brentwood, can help us continue what we have in Brentwood.
Mr. Galbraith?
I want to use my leadership to reflect the views and the will of people, the residents of the city. It's been noted several times that a majority of new people moving in are young families with children, and yet, they're highly underrepresented than people that take an active role in the community. And so, while I bring a historical perspective on being born and raised here and living here all my life, I think if Brentwood is going to continue to be the place that has been created and be the ideal community for, that attracts businesses and residents to come spend their time here and raise their families here and invest their money here, I think we're going to have to continue to engage that new generation of people, and I think I will bring that energetic, new, young leadership style that can attract those people and can represent all of Brentwood.
Mr. Gorman?
Will you repeat the question, please, Tom?
Please state how your leadership will contribute to the city of Brentwood over the next four years.
Thank you. My leadership will contribute to the city of Brentwood over the next four years by continuing to grow this city that we have here in a very wise and strategic fashion. I have 20-plus years as a small business owner. I've managed through great growth times, have managed through very trying times as well. There are times where you have to move quickly and make decisions, other times where you need to be very wise and evaluate all of the options. Brentwood is a great place. My leadership is driven from understanding what the needs of the people are out there. I have proven through my time on the Planning Commission, eight-plus years, that I will listen to all stakeholders out there, have the track record as well in business of showing my ability to lead. Thank you.
Many thanks to all the candidates. That concludes today's forum. Remember, if you want to hear these words again, tune in to WAKM AM 950 and 8:06 tomorrow morning, or you can watch Williamson County Cable TV, Channel 3 on Comcast, and that'll be on several times between now and the election. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Yeah, that's great. Let's give the candidates a hand. Thank you all. I'm going to thank the candidates. I want to thank you all for coming this morning. I want to thank Tom for moderating. I also thank you to G-Catering for providing this morning's complimentary breakfast, and I want to thank you all, too, for your past and future pledge support of the Williamson County Chamber of Commerce. We certainly appreciate that and look forward to working with you all in a certain capacity going forward. Reminder, May 7 is Election Day. Make sure you learn about the candidates, meet the candidates, learn the issues, and most importantly, go vote. I'll just say one other thing, too. The monthly chamber meeting is coming up next Tuesday, April 16. It's a breakfast at 7:30 a.m., so if you haven't registered, make sure you register for that. Again, thanks for coming this morning, and thank you all for your time. Thank you.